Give her a ski hill, you know, is the Hitchcock expansion, is that for ski hill? Or is that a separate?
That's ski hill.
That's the ski hill.
Okay.
So we're a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars short?
Well, that's if we did.
We move a hundred and sixty-five out of gaming, I mean.
No, I agree, I I'm not disagreeing with you, I'm just saying that. We're actually more than, if if we decide to move forward with Hitchcock, we're more than. That's looking at probably more like one point five. Transfer over from gaming. To land fund to make that work.
I thought the two million was Hitchcock.
It is.
It is, but if you. Agree to the price that Mr. Fleischer wants to go forward with, then we'd be short.
Right, and so. And then, you know.
Probably wouldn't.
No, because of.
Two point one.
Iowa West.
Yeah, we're Iowa West is paying one point five, they're paying one point four nine five. And.
It's actually one point four, because they're taking the nine five for the study.
Right, so we we're in it, we'd have to move another hundred thousand.
Right. And, keep in mind too. ARPA funds can be used for tourism, too. Which I think Hitchcock would count for.
Which is Hitchcock, and right now, we have nine million in ARPA funds. We had projected five million for the radios, three hundred thousand for a water line. And, the radios aren't gonna be five million, and we're gonna get our three hundred thousand back for the water line.
Where is that?
More than likely.
It's good math.
Huh?
It's good math, positive math, I should say.
Play this deal with Corby.
Okay, so Corby's coming next week for a closed session to talk to us, and I asked him to do that because honestly, everyone in here has many questions that. I kept getting in the middle of, and whether or not I'm asking the question correctly, or I don't piss Corby off. Whatever, I want him to be able to ask those questions, you guys ask him direct of him. He would like us. He wants us to pay. Three point five million dollars, he wants us to pay three point two upfront, and then the remaining three years after that. Pay a hundred thousand dollars each year until. He gets his money.
Why is that?
I think he wanted to be able to help us out.
I don't want his fucking help.
So. That's that.
Really? You're really?
He said, uh. He wants, until he's paid in full, he wanted to have first right refusal on any of the potential contracts that we'd have for other ski hills coming in. So meaning. You know, in theory, if if we had Sioux City come down and bid on it, saying, you know, we wanna run the ski hill for a million dollars a year, Corby wants to first right to refuse that same dollar. Unless he's paying for, obviously, um, and then, what's the other things he said, obviously, this year he would run it. Through through this season, which I think if we did move forward, I think that makes. Common sense. Shit, what am I missing? Said that he'd be more than willing to be available for consulting going forward, he did ask that we'd consider keeping his employees staffed somehow. But I don't think that's as big of a deal to him as it is his wife. So. After last meeting, Tim and I went and drove up there and walked around that. Lodge a little bit, I mean, it's.
It's a shithole.
It definitely needs some love.
The structure's okay. But it needs love.
It needs love, it needs more than that.
So then, here's what I wanted to put in, I wanna put all this into perspective, because I think this is the problem that we all have on this board with this issue. No one likes Corby. I think we can all agree, no one really likes the guy, he's kind of, it's Corby. But, if you really think about what's going on with this purchase, this property, the county's real cost to get this property is two point one million dollars. That's how much it'll cost Ottawa County taxpayer, public use dollars, to get this property. So, you got, I think we need to look at it in that respect and not consider the fact that it is Corby, I think we need to look at the black and white, if our, if our goal is to expand Hitchcock. Is a hundred acres with a ski hill with the potential to do all this stuff, worth two point one million dollars to us. You know, because Iowa West is basically kicking in the other remainder, and that's not our money, that's not money that the taxpayers necessarily have to. You know, that they, they shouldn't really have an opinion on it, it's not their money, so. There's also potential for other grants, and then the, now knowing that we can possibly spend ARPA dollars on this. Again, we, 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 this changes the picture for us a little bit, I think we all have this personal thing, it's Corby, and we're like, screw this guy, we don't wanna.
Get Corby out of it, what's the grants, the grants are gonna be for improvements, correct?
No.
For land acquisition?
We, if we can get a re-grant, I don't know if we can, but if we can. That's just straight property, bought property.
Okay.
And that was up to three hundred, so, it was six hundred thousand, and we'd be able to take advantage of three hundred of it, and that was pretty likely that we would get that.
Okay, cuz, like, I do know, they're looking at.
I thought any grants we got, we had to.
Half, half of the grant has to go back to Iowa West.
Discount Iowa West back.
That's correct. Half, that fifty fifty.
So, the grant is six hundred thousand dollars, we would only get three hundred of it, so now our cost is down to one point eight, if we get the re-grant.
Okay, let's talk about. The ski hills itself. Do we plan on running that as a ski hills?
I think we plan on leasing it, to someone else to run.
Okay, when we lease it? Do, does it look like we'll make money?
We don't have to worry about whether or not it makes money, we get a lease fee.
I do. I think we do.
Well.
If, if we lease it out, and they make some money, and we make some money.
We get a lease fee, so that is our money. So whatever, I mean, unless you wanna try to create a contract based on.
And then who does the improvements? They do?
We wouldn't.
That's all part of what we negotiate with that contractor.
Bugs me.
Well, it's gotta happen.
Because, Corby is running this on a shoestring, and he's still making money. And I, I guess my feeling is, and I'm just a point I'm getting to. If the county does run it. There's a good possibility that county could make some money.
I agree.
And one of the things I look at is, if this gaming money gets all goofy on us, because of Nebraska, and all the counties wanting more of our money. That's possibly a little bit of a cash cow for the. So, would that stay in conservation, or would that come back to the general fund?
So you could.
Or land acquisition fund.
You'd have to negotiate that.
I meant the money from the ski hills if we ran it.
You'd have to negotiate that with the contractor, so like, if you went to the contractor and said, look, you can lease it for X dollars, but any profit over X goes back to the county is what you'd have to say, and to make that.
Cause there's some years that they make money, and some, they don't make a lot of money, but they're.
Middle range.
They hold their own, but I knew Russ really good.
But what, what's the number, I mean, really, what, what's the number for getting it to be? Uh, I'm just using this, this word, a state of the art facility, I mean.
Oh, I think we could put three to five million in.
You gotta put.
That's not even close.
You gotta put.
Ten to fifteen million, probably. Well, it just depends on how. The scope of what we're trying to accomplish, but yeah, I agree, it's gonna be, it's gonna be north of five million, probably.
Has it, has there been any? I mean, any work to that?
He's done some stuff.
You just start throwing a swag.
He's patched together stuff.
No, that's what I'm saying, the.
That's all he's done.
We're buying a, a cobbled up.
It's, it's a cobbled mess, I've worked up there before him.
We keep saying this, we all keep saying this, we're not experts, and I'm telling you right now that number one, that the insurance company is covering him and giving him insurance, and I'm saying that he had to make these certain improvements, and they said, you're good. So, no matter what we think, it, it still passes muster for what is acceptable in this space, none of us are in the skiing space, so.
Okay.
We might want it better, but.
Cause everybody, and I'm sure you guys all been on the board, you've seen what. Conservation wants to do up there.
Mm-hmm.
Have you seen that, Len?
Hmm, no.
I mean, they've got quite a deal they wanna do on this, with the ski hills and the new lodge.
It was the land acquisition that Chad Dravy came and briefed to us.
Oh, okay.
You, you were there.
Yeah.
And it's, it's quite a deal, they wanna do quite a bit of stuff. Now, I'm just throwing stuff on the table, if we give him that, that includes those homes and that extra land.
Yes.
Um. If, if the county got in trouble, they could sell those.
His deal, well, we know what Corby's deal is, so we just have to decide whether to take it.
Finally, after all these years, last year it was two point.
Well, we don't know, because.
Two point six, and now it's three point, what, five plus?
It's a, it's a change.
You talked to him, and the deal got sour because of something that Franco was involved with.
He, he can say whatever he wants, if you go to buy a car, you buy a car, if you buy a freaking piece of land, you buy a piece of land. Corby wants to put all these strings on it.
But no one in this room would do anything different if it was your.
If it was mine to sell you back.
So, I mean, I.
Why would you market it?
I wouldn't, I think I'd have to market it for sale.
I'm just saying, you can do it in the best interest of you.
Right, but he ain't marketing it for sale.
Corby's not like, out here to, you know, make us five board members happy, Corby's out to make Corby happy.
This, this could be.
I don't blame him for that.
A cash cow for the county.
It could be.
If we, I, I know it's all speculative, you guys, but it's been a cash cow for a lot of people for a lot of years. Russ Lindeman owned that, and he done one.
I mean, I, I think we gotta look at it, if we, if we acquire this property, that we plan out any kind of improvements over time, I don't think Iowa West is off the table for making these improvements down the line either. I think they're just, their one point four is available now, if we don't take that one point four, that one point four is gone. So, it'd be really dumb to throw away one point four million dollars because we have a personal problem with.
And we've talked all that stuff before, and I think, I think that's good. But. How do we justify the two point one?
Well, that's twenty-one thousand dollars an acre for non-tiltable land, so that is hard justification to make.
You better believe it, man, people are gonna be all over our butts.
But, then this new magic fund came down from the feds that was called the American Rescue Funds, and that is, can be used for tourism. And I think that'd be a huge tourism attraction for Pot County, and I think we should absolutely consider using money from there. I mean.
And you got, and you got, what, five hundred thousand plus in homes that are sitting on it, so what is it, really one point six for land?
Yep.
I mean, if you think of it that way.
And if we get the re-grant, I mean, these dollars, I mean, they keep coming down, the number for us is, can, has huge potential to come down.
Hitchcock is like. One of the biggest parks in Iowa.
I don't know.
Is there any tillable land, there is none on that?
Yeah, there's some. There's also, like, the lay down yards, you know, we talked about that.
Can you bring that up on the map?
Or be barking a future down the line, I mean, there's, there's a lot of different things that could happen there, um. It's just. I, I just have a real problem with making this decision because of how we feel about Corby, you know, like, that's, that's the problem.
I don't think we're trying to do that, I'm trying to see the big picture, the future, you know, the future of what it is.
I don't think anyone's trying to, we just do. So.
I'm for it, I'm against the money, the money's gone up so much, I thought we were done at three two.
Can you go up? That's the parking lot's there. Zoom out. Okay, and then scroll down just there, right there, okay, so. There is. We drove by the one house, Tim and I drove by that one house last week, and, you know, it's fine, I mean, there's nothing.
Here. This is that little, little house right in here?
Yep.
There's, that was an old dog town, here's Russ Lindeman's old house, and he's got a shop there, I think he's got just a piece like this, is this part of it?
Lindeman doesn't own anything there.
I, I know, I, I, I'm saying it was his, this ain't part of it, is it?
No. Nope, everything's up on the hill, go left to that, keep going left, right there, click that, will ya? Yep, and scroll down the map.
Eighty-eight point six six acres, this piece.
Yeah, it ends up being like, right at a hundred acres, or just shy of a hundred acres.
With the two homes?
Yeah, with the two homes.
Now at eighteen thousand, does it put them into Menards, reach the price range?
Can you click zoom in one?
They pay a hell of a price for their land out there.
Here, come this way. Yeah, it was a motorcycle drive.
So this whole little chunk right here, that could be our, has the potential to become an RV park, like, you know, very quickly.
I got three years left on the board, I don't know if I'm gonna run it.
Like, with little investment.
The next board is gonna have to find money to fix that place.
So, who owns this, does, uh?
Money to what?
Or sooner.
To fix it.
The doctor?
Or sooner.
And click over there.
I mean, I went in the lodge with Justin, and I mean, he ain't done a fucking lick of maintenance on that place.
Click on that, bring up the owner.
It, it's just old, outdated, I mean, he's.
That's what I'm saying, I just.
Just put as much bandage on as you can.
I can't see, and, you know, and.
I just don't blame him.
The quality, a quality operator wanting to go. In, and try to. Run if you don't put a whole new. Base on it, and a whole new deal, and.
You know, wait in both of the.
We gotta. Paved that road into the thing, and.
You got fucking broken crack dial up, I mean, it's a goddamn hazard, and it, it wasn't, didn't just happen this last ski season.
No.
It's been there for.
I've been up there.
A long time.
Have the contractor looked at what it would take to get that into usable?
You know, when I, when I said ten to fifteen million dollars earlier, I'm not shitting you.
Well, if we done that, we'd knock that some ditch in, put in what they wanted.
Yeah, I, I don't.
And it wouldn't just be for the lodge, I mean.
Well, yeah, no, everything, what would it cost?
I think there's a lot we could look at, it doesn't, that, that, that particular lodge doesn't have to necessarily be the lodge yet, I mean, that, that could be revamped into something different.
Okay, that big lift, I remember when they put that in, was it eighteen, twenty years ago, he bought a used lift, that was a big deal, up there.
Now they can't get parts for it, they have to, they have to specifically machine them.
That's, so, I, I get that, and I know we hear that all the time, but that is not uncommon in any industry, I mean, I got shit done at Sire, I get machined every freaking year to fix it.
And, and our roads guys, the ditch digger, they had to have a pump machined for them specifically, five grand, last, was it this spring? Craig Jensen. Looking, buying a new one, or, I, I commend him for doing that, five grand for doing that. Saved us a lot of money, like he said, it was a good machine, why get rid of it? Saved a lot of money. I guess my feeling is. I, I wanna, I want us to get it. I hate the price. I don't want Corby around, I don't want his little freaking, I get this, I get that, screw him.
We give him three point five million dollars, he walks away.
We get someone, if we do this, we get someone in there this year. I mean, someone to watch the business.
Well, we own it, here's what would happen, we would buy it, we would own it, we'd allow him to run it through the end of the year, which is what I think he's saying.
With his insurance, not ours.
That's fine, I don't, I mean, we can do whatever the hell we want there.
Well, that, cuz there was people killed on that hill, years ago, that sued the living shit out of us.
We can make a clause in our contract that just basically says, like, this is on you, if someone dies, that's on you, but, I think.
So, I want his insurance.
He will walk away for three five, if we give him three point five million dollars, he's gone, he's over, he's out of our hair, forever.
Like, he runs it this year, you said.
After this year, yep, so he gets to play April fifteenth.
We need someone to be able to oversee.
We own the property, so there's no reason we couldn't send someone in there to do that.
We'll stick Franco in there.
Jeff Franco, I mean.
You know, it, um, I've had a lot of conversations with Justin, and it wasn't Franco.
I don't think it was.
It was, it was Corby, and Jeff Franco just has the mindset of, say, maybe a Tim Whitman or a Brian Shea, and he doesn't take any shit. You know, when you tell him you're gonna do something. And Corby never did it, I mean, why wouldn't the guy get a little disappointed? So. I don't know.
That's why you wanted him out of there.
Yeah, and, and that's okay if he didn't get along, you know, I told Schultz, if we bring Corby in for a closed session, probably need some duct tape for Tim Whitman.
I'd like to tell him what a duct tape is.
Projectiles away from you.
You know what?
You, you just have to ask yourself, as a property, like, if, what? What is it worth to you, what is the number that you're comfortable buying it for, and then, and then?
Three point two.
What's that?
Three point two.
No, but, not even that, like, the county's portion of it, what are you comfortable with, and then say, okay, how do we get to that point, well. If we used federal dollars, and we used Iowa West money, and then if we get this re-grant, now, are those numbers something that you can live with?
Do we have Mark in here, next week?
Yeah, Mark, I did ask if Mark Schumaker could be in here, he said yes, he just said he absolutely did not want Franco, I don't know what happened, there's more to that story.
I don't care what he wants. He's an idiot, okay, working around us, not him.
Out of respect for him, and out of what I tried to accomplish by setting this up, I said, that's fine, I talked to Mark about it, he said, it's fine, so I don't really, to me, I don't think Franco even needs to be here anyway, I don't think this is a decision that he needs to be involved in.
If that would, if that would stir his pot, I would, would.
It's not, it's not even that, Franco was not.
I'm for Mark being in here, cuz I wanna know, Mark, what, what can we get, what, he's talking to his grants and stuff, what's doing?
Mark will be here, Franco will not.
I'm okay with that.
But, you, at the end of the day, when we leave this session, and we decide we're gonna move forward and buy this thing, we need to be able to go out publicly as a group and say, we bought this property for X dollars, plus grants. You know, so if X for us is one point five, is what the county's portion of own Mount Crescent was, then that's the, that's the music we should be telling everybody, the rest of it is really.
What are you thinking?
I'm thinking that lodge needs a fuck hell of a lot of work.
What are you thinking?
I'm thinking that he should market it for sale, it's such a great deal.
You?
I'm, I'm like on the damn fence, cuz I, like, if we can't get consensus, I don't wanna move forward with it, cuz it sucks.
What are you thinking, Len?
I thought we were done a long time ago. Negotiations, the word was, if he don't take it, we'll walk on, and, and we haven't walked on, we keep dragging ourselves back.
Isn't that fun?
Now we've either gotta buy it or not buy it.
I mean, it just.
I, I kinda agree with him that we shouldn't pass money up if we, we got to.
I thi, I think I agree with that, and I also think this could be something bigger than, for the future for the county, I think it could be bigger than what we.
I just think we gotta figure out what our dollar amount is, that we're willing to bet on this, so that if we have to sell this down the line, for some reason, if things fail, that we can at least get our money back.
Do we have any stipulations on the Iowa West money as far as that goes?
No, I think the only agreement was that, Tim, you were involved in that, I think they just have to, if they agree to the study. I think that's it.
There wasn't any length of time that you guys had to keep the land?
I don't think so, but I mean, I think in good faith, we were telling them we're gonna keep it forever, so, I don't.
You know, there'd need to be another conversation with, uh, Brenda.
With who?
Brenda.
I think when we bring Corby in here, we talk about getting somebody that can oversee and learn, and Corby's gone when.
Yeah, so, the only thing that I just wanna kind of throw out there too, is, for.
After the season.
Cover it up, years ago. You know, the other thing is, Mitch, if that, if the board does decide to take the Mount Crescent funding out of ARPA money?
Or some of it, yep.
There's, there's another two million dollars available in land fund.
For what?
For this stuff.
Whatever.
I, all in all, I think everyone, I think the board's in a really good position, and, you know, can afford to make some of these bigger purchases, just. As some of these things are coming up, and more people are saying that the county's spending money, it seems like more people are starting to ask as well, so. Which they will do, so.
This ends up being a three to two vote, to move forward with the purchase of this property, I would ask that the board. Be in unison and vote for this thing. Now go on a, on a limb all by yourself, I mean, if the, if the decision in closed session is. Three to two, or four to one to move forward and buy this. Let's be, uh, all together and, and make this happen. Or, you don't have to.
Len and I did. I, I'll. I'll find that.
I'm, I'm leaning in favor.
I just, I just wanna make sure we know.
I think it could be a boondoggle.
What's, uh, before we end this, before we end this, I wanna know, well, are we gonna use ARPA to do this?
Ski hills.
I know it's, I know it's.
I thought it was a cash cow.
Are we gonna use ARPA to do this?
What?
I, let's just hypothetically say, we're gonna pay three point five and get this ski hill. What are we using, like, what are we gonna use, are we gonna use?
I, I say we use the two million out of here, and the one point four, and the ARPA holes we need is a hundred.
ARPA.
No, I'd say take it all out of ARPA.
I would, I would tend to, I would tend to lean that direction, at least majority out of the ARPA funds, write it up as, hey, this is the tourism portion of it, cuz that money has to be spent or obligated by twenty twenty-four anyway. And then, if you have extra money in your land fund, we can move that and do anything with that, so.
I know, but when we leave the meeting, the public needs to understand that we didn't spend their county property tax dollars, or even their public use dollars. To make this purchase, instead, we used federal money and grant money to make that purchase.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
You know, I think if we give, when Corby comes. I, I'm not, I'm not voting to. Buy this land until we have a signed purchase agreement from him.
We can't agree to anything in closed session anyway, I just wanted you guys to all be able to ask the questions you wanted to ask, so I think.
I mean, while I, while I agree with your statement, when we make sure, we let him know where the money came from and how it was spent. I think it's premature to do that until you have. A signed purchase agreement in place, something that he can't back out of.
No, I, I'm not disagreeing.
I don't trust the guy either.
He shouldn't, he shouldn't have any knowledge of where the money is coming from.
Not him, I'm just saying, the public.
No, 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 I understand that.
If we get this. We need to really look at, I mean, we ain't gonna.
I just don't think we run around town and pat ourselves on the back for buying Mount Crescent, I think we just kinda, just quietly get this done and move forward, I personally think that's how we handle it.
But, but I, I, I don't know.
It's gonna be out for the public record.
Yeah, I know, but I just don't think we need to draw extra.
Not right now, it isn't.
I, I agree.
But it, it needs to be a clean cut from him.
Yep.
But I, you know, I don't know if he's gonna.
He just said, if we can't do it. That he, like, he, he said, since he's like, he's like, I wanna help, this is what he said, I, I think he genuinely thinks he's being honest, but, he says. I wanna help you guys out, I know you're at three two, so what I'll do for you is, I'll let you pay me the remainder over the course of three years after.
He knows we're at three two.
So.
So we could take gaming for the extra three hundred, or three hundred mil, or three hundred thousand.
Yeah, the last time I talked to him, Scott, was, that was the numbers we gave, three two, and that's it, hung out.
Or.
Two point one, baby.
But I just don't wanna keep getting. I just felt like I'm at a point now where, I need to get him in front of this board, if, if I keep going, we're gonna keep going, he's gonna do that.
You can spend on anything.
Well, I just think.
Cause we're gonna have to improve that road going up there, that's one thing that, that has been talked about a lot.
Well, yeah, we're gonna have to. Have to be.
I know it's kinda a hard job to run that business, cuz I've been up there a couple times, but.
County facility, I mean, we pretty much have to.
I think if we done it correctly, it could be a big, we could put a lot of money into.
Kinda put the right person.
Well, we got another.
I, I agree with that.
And ARPA staring us in the face too, that we really have no idea what we're gonna spend on.
Leon, can we make a sec, separate entity for running it? The county?
If you make a separate entity for running it, you're probably not going to have a tax exempt property anymore, so you're gonna be paying property taxes and all kinds of other taxes on it. Because I don't know.
Even if we own it?
Even if the county owns it, but if it is being used for profit, then it's no longer an exempt property in taxes.
So even if we make profit, and then?
Well, it's, it's really, really, really fuzzy on how that works, you know. Selling concessions at a football game is just kind of a side business of a school district, so, that doesn't make the football field taxable. But if the purpose of using that land is to make money, then it can become taxable.
So if we lease out to a company, and they're making money, and we're making money?
You're going to have to have the taxes paid as part of the lease, that whoever, you know.
So the county will have to pay tax, property tax.
I am guessing that Penny would make that taxable, and so you would have to make that, now, if it's the county running it.
Right.
Because it's part of conservation, part of entertainment and tourism, then there's an argument, it's no different from any other park, you know, you charge fees for the park to help reimburse the costs of it. So at that point, it would not be taxable, or it would not be tax property.
Yeah, so it's like, parts of it are. You know, so like, the county can operate the entire facility, but then there's parts of the ski hill that are operated by a contractor, you can do that.
Yeah, and, and you can also have a partial exemption where you have to pay, you know, property taxes on parts of it.
We would then, with, we're not the first, we're, we're far from the first, uh, you know, public entity that's gonna own a ski hill if we go this route, so.
Well, we, I don't know, I, I understand what Tim said. Well, we, I don't know, I, I understand what Tim said, but if he's not a hundred percent out, I'm. I'm probably not gonna be in support of. The whatever deal we cut with him.
Well, you understand, Scott, that if we were to make it, it's too, way too late this season to hire anybody.
No, no, I understand that.
He's gonna run it this year, no matter what.
Well, if he's not willing to do it under our terms, how, what are we gonna do?
I don't think, I think he is, I just think.
What is our terms for running it this year?
Well, you said he has to, his insurance and.
I, oh, I think he's gotta cover, yeah, we're gonna cover his insurance.
I don't think he's arguing that, I don't think he has an argument to that at all, I think it's honestly just, he just wants.